Let's go ahead and call the work session to order if we could, please. First item on the agenda is public comment on issues that are on the agenda. Does anyone wish to address the council? See none, so we'll move ahead. We have a docket to approve. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Ellinger and a second by Councilmember Gordon to approve the docket. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. We have a summary from December 9th for approval. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gordon and a second by Councilmember Beard to approve the December 9th summary. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, no. Motion carries. We're now down to budget amendments. I think Councilmember Henson has a motion there.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that Budget Journal number 29859-60 on the budget amendment request list be amended to change the dollar amount from $100,000 to $37,050 to match actual deposits. And this is for environmental policy, the Lilly program. It was just an error that needs to be corrected. So moved.
Second.
All right. Let me, I guess the best way to deal with this is a motion to approve the budget amendments. Councilmember Henson, if, Councilmember Henson? Peggy. Yeah. How about if we convert your motion into a motion to approve the budget amendments and then we'll entertain that amendment that you just made. Is there a second from Councilmember Gordon?
Second.
All right. Now, with the motion to approve the budget amendments on the floor, Councilmember Henson has moved to amend one item. Any discussion about that? Seeing none, those in favor of the amendment proposed by Councilmember Henson, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. We're now ready to consider the budget amendments as amended. Any discussion? Councilmember Stenit.
Thank you, Mayor. I did have a question on the general entry. Councilmember Henson just read 29859-60. Can we get a copy of the expenditures? I understand this is the revenue we're realizing from the Lilly. If we can get a copy of the expenditures on that program versus the revenue, that'd be great.
Let's see, Council, let's see, Commissioner Taylor, okay. Charlie Martin says he can make arrangements for that to happen.
Thank you.
Anything further? Seeing nothing further, we'll proceed to vote. Those in favor of approving the budget amendments as amended, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. I think Mr. Green has a few new business issues to address for us. Artie, if you could go over some clerical issues there.
Yes, Mayor. Under Item A on the new business, it should read Authorization to Amend Section 21-5 of the Code of Ordinance, Authorization to Amend 21-5 of Code of Ordinance, not the 8th of ordinance number. So that needs to be replaced. And we've already replaced the memo that you all have a copy of in that packet.
You lost me there, Artie. I didn't follow.
Okay, Item A.
Yes.
Where it says this request would authorize an amendment to Section 8 of ordinance number, that should be replaced with Authorization to Amend Section 21-5 of the Code of Ordinance.
Thank you.
That was a clerical error. And a new memo has been placed in the packet.
All right. Anything further?
That's it.
All right. The floor is open for a motion to approve those new business items with that clerical change.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Myers to approve the new business items and a second by Councilmember Gordon. Any discussion? Councilmember Gordon. I don't know either, but we'll work through it here.
I did log in. I'm not sure where, oh, there it is. Anyway, I had a question on two different items. On Item E, Commissioner Co., if, I just wanted to know if... This is the item on the temporary appointment of Mary Pfister as acting advisor for policy and budget. And I didn't see, I saw temporary, but I didn't see an end date.
Right.
Do you have an end date?
The ordinance says that these can't go beyond six months.
Okay.
So it will be, it will end six months from the date of appointment.
Okay, thank you. And then on Item K, which is Commissioner Taylor here, or?
Charlie Martin.
Charlie Martin. This is the old Frankfurt Pike petroleum release. Can you just tell me what date that occurred, or do we know?
We don't know.
We don't know.
This is unfortunately the one I probably know the least about, but this is what I do know about it, is that we began to get hits in the Leachate collection system, which goes down to the pump stations that we operate that are along the creek. And so further investigation has led to this, this request for new business right now, so we can get to the bottom of it and eliminate it. Right now, it is, it's being contained, the best we know of, as far as environmentally, by the Leachate system that was installed when the landfill was closed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm not entirely clear when requests to speak come up on the screen, so if I'm missing you, it's not intentional right now. Does anyone else wish to speak to the new business items? Councilmember Stenit.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a couple of questions. One on Z, this is another one of our bus shelters, art in motion, I believe this one is, or actually just agreeing for a right of way, the one before it was art in motion. But just, I'd like to have a little bit more explanation as to why we want to give blanket authority to the commissioner to execute all these future agreements. I know in my district, there has been some issues with the right of way and where these are being placed. And I want to know what kind of oversight council members are, in terms of heads up on these and where they're going to be located, we're going to be given. Because I hate to go through this issue again like we have had on Fortune Drive. It's a little uncomfortable for some business owners and property owners as to where these go. So will we still be getting a list before they go in?
Yes, Councilmember, we will. What we had done is, and I think I mentioned this in a prior council session, that we were trying to expedite the process of facilitating the bus shelters with Lextran, because it was a real problem for them. So in order to continue with that process, we're still going to have a technical review committee meeting for each bus shelter to review that. And as opposed to bringing each one of those for an encroachment agreement to the council for approval, we thought we'd just expedite that, but you'd still receive the list of those individual shelters. But just giving the Commissioner of Public Works the sign off as opposed to each one coming straight to council.
So we'll get a list as soon as the technical review committee approves it?
That's correct.
Before it's installed, we'll be notified?
Yes, sir.
Okay, as long as we continue to do that, that's fine. And then on X, I was a little curious as to this study, the freight, I think we call it the freight study, hadn't been reviewed since 1979. Curious about why it's popping up in 2009 and where we hope to go with it. I know there was some explanation on here. I know we've had explanation, or some discussion last month on the uses of certain freight traffic on Man of War. So is there any thing new, or where are we going with this, Max, on X?
Yes, this is just long overdue in our, you know, our view of the MPO. It's a, we periodically request that planning money from the state, all the MPOs do, and we thought this would be a good candidate for it. And of course, you have to get the match secured well before the end of the fiscal year when they would award these. Since then, there's been some questions about, you know, funding levels from Washington and so forth. And they're kind of holding this money back on, you know, to maybe cover shortfalls and so forth. So there would be some more discussion before that would be awarded, but we still had to move forward with, you know, getting, getting this match secured. But this is one that the MPO has wanted to do for several years now, just because, like you said, it's very long overdue. We're kind of fortunate in this area to not have too many major freight issues, you know, with the interstates not running through the middle of town and so forth. However, we do have other issues where, you know, they're trying to get to certain places and you have bottlenecks and conflicts and so forth. So it's just a new inventory and basically trying to decrease conflicts between vehicles and trucks. That's a huge safety issue because you, when those two have crashes, they're pretty severe. And also to just make sure that goods are moving how they're moving through our area and making sure that they're moving through smoothly and making sure the new generators and receivers are, have adequate facilities and so forth. And we can guide our plan and our projects to try to meet those. And not only our local projects, but the state and federal monies also.
I guess my only concern, and Mayor, I mean, you as anybody knows how tight our budget is going to be next year. I mean, here we are, we're committing these funds for our next budget. And I guess my concern is, is this the most pressing project to go ahead and commit ourselves? Obviously, we have to get the grant first, but I've rarely seen this government get a grant and not accept it.
Right.
So, I mean, I know it's only $33,000, but these things start mounting up going into '10, and I'm just curious, is this the best use of this money, this $33,000, in terms of planning department?
Right. Maybe not at this time. I can agree with you. And we still have to have this discussion with the state and the federal government. It may be better to wait a few years, you know, maybe till next cycle. I know there's, all the MPOs are not really submitting a lot of these projects right now, maybe one or two. Usually, there's many on the table. So this may, you know, I don't believe it would be a problem with withdrawing it if that was a budget issue for us. I think it would probably be a good time. It's definitely a budget issue with the state and they're discussing it. But I think it's an important study to do in the near future, I believe, just because, as you stated earlier, it's long overdue and it needs to be assessed and worked into our long-range plan. We feel it's important enough to try to do in the near future.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Blues, I think you're up.
I just wanted to add that if this, if this study, which is overdue, will, will give us some insight into, into safety improvements on, you know, on our urban, urban street system, especially now that we have so many, you know, so many large, large trucks sharing, sharing the road, if sharing is the right word, always. Max, do you think that this is, you know, and you say we might wait a few, a few years on, on this, what is, what is your sense of how urgent this might be, simply in terms of safety concerns, not only in, on the roadways, but also on the railways?
Right. I think in the past, we've done some good things. From the 1979 study, we've did the grade separation on Broadway and, you know, put in a lot of gates out on where we've had development on the urban edges and things like that. We've done some good things that we've been guided by, by studies and so forth. But whenever you read the literature, whenever we go to conferences, whenever we are talking, freight increases are supposed to just go, you know, crazy. They're supposed to, freight movement is supposed to just increase largely. I forgot the percentages, but more and more trucks are, you know, scheduled to get onto our road system. So not having a good assessment, a good understanding of that is, is kind of dropping the ball, I believe. So I don't believe it's a real vital thing that we have to do, you know, right now, but it's definitely something we want to do in the next few years, I believe, just to have a good understanding, as you said. And those, you know, I think everybody that drives the interstate sees more and more trucks every year, you know? And so it's something that you want to pay attention to, I believe. And I believe that's where the MPO wanted to go with it, is just make sure that we have, are considering it. It's one of the planning factors in the legislation that we have to consider. And also, I think it's our obligation to consider it not only from a goods movement economy standpoint, but also a safety standpoint, which is always first and foremost in our planning process.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Myers.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner, how you doing? I just have a couple of questions about the position. This is the position that I think the council determined it was not going to fund in the last budget cycle. Is that correct?
That's true. That's correct. Yes, sir.
What has changed that the administration is bringing this forward to be funded?
A couple of things. First of all, my administrative officer senior, Sandy Nichols, retired, and we have not replaced that position. And Sandy was instrumental in helping when I was in charge of part of the budget. Without her help, I'm, I'm snowed, quite frankly. And then in the Division of Budgeting, we have Connie Underwood, who retired. We've replaced her by moving Elizabeth up, but then that makes Elizabeth's position vacant. So we're one person short in budgeting. So this really comes about because we just don't have enough hands on deck to be able to do a thorough job of preparing the mayor's recommended budget and working with the council through that budget process. It's purely, we just need another pair of hands. And I was thrilled that Mary was willing to step up to the plate and, and offer to help.
So it sounds like what you're saying is that the reason you fill this position is because, since it's appointed, you can make the appointment immediately?
We could make, that's right. We could make the appointment immediately. It is temporary. Mary has absolutely no interest in the position long-term, and the mayor hasn't yet determined whether he will request funding for that position in the next budget. But this was just a way to help us temporarily in a really cost-effective way, rather than trying to hire temporary help or, or something like that. We felt like this was the least expensive route to go, to get the best expertise.
And the most effective and efficient way to get it done.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Anything further? All right. Those then in favor of approving the items of new business, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. The motion carries. We're now down to the Budget and Finance Committee report. I don't know if that's Councilman Lane, Councilmember Lane.
Thank you, Mayor. Our former councilmember Stevens asked me to fill in for him since he's not on the council The meeting was held, the Budget and Finance Committee meeting was held on December 9th, and the major portion of the meeting was report from the Equine Task Force. And one of the major points brought out by the task force is that there's no sales tax exemptions for equine agribusinesses where other business like cattle raising are exempt from sales tax. So a motion was made by Councilmember Gordon to take the issue of sales tax inequities for horse farm owners to the Central Kentucky Caucus and to our Urban County Government's Director of Government Relations. This was seconded by Councilmember Ellinger and passed without dissent. So although, I suppose this could be just a direct request for the administration to implement that effort, I don't think a motion is really required at this time. In addition to that, Commissioner Co reported on financials, and probably the most significant thing she said was she was concerned about the revenue and budget for fiscal year 2010. And she was waiting to see more updated financial information for this fiscal year. We should have a report hopefully by the next Budget and Finance Committee meeting. The other two items, internal audit reports. Bruce Saly made a report on Division of Engineering Project Management and the Haley Pike Landfield Collection Process. And Mike Webb, the Acting Commissioner of Public Works, stated that his department is working on changes that will rectify those issues as soon as possible. And then the last item was an overview of the Man of War Study, show how we can make improvements to the road with minimum capital expenditures. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Lane? All right. We're ready then to move on to council reports. And it looks like Councilmember Myers is first. I'm sorry, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I wanted to welcome Councilmember Diane Lawless and Councilmember Cheryl Feigl. It's great to have you two aboard, and I look forward to working with you both. Secondly, I wanted to report that the Stormwater Fee Task Force met in December, had its first meeting and kind of got organized. And we're having our second meeting this Thursday, January the 8th, at 1:00 in the afternoon on the fifth floor in the conference room. And all council members should have received a hard copy of our minutes and our agenda for the next meeting. What I'm hoping is to keep all council members in the loop as much as possible. And we've gotten several people from the public who have wanted to be on the email list, so they're all added and they're all getting all the information that we're getting. So that as we go through the process, all council members and as many people in the public as want to know what we're doing will know. So council members, if you know anyone who wants added to the email list, just let me know, and we'll be happy to send them the information electronically. And then finally, I wanted to go back to August. On August the 26th, we discussed our tax rates, as we do every year. And during the discussion, I had requested that we get a reporting from all of the quasi-governmental bodies that receive a dedicated tax, the Health Department, Lextran, Soil and Conservation, the library, thank you, and there's one more. And I had not heard anything about that, because what I was wanting to know was at least that the council had had an opportunity to look at, look at those. And so I'd like to go ahead and, maybe Commissioner Co has an answer to that before I make a The Extension Service, thank you, is the other.
Right. And I apologize, we, we have those reports, and as I noted earlier, I've had a retirement. She was the one who collected all that information and clearly it just didn't get conveyed to you. We did collect it, so we will get it to you before the end of the week. I'm terribly sorry.
But I understand. I just thought it might be good to bring it back up since we had not heard.
Right. We did get them, so we'll give them to you.
Okay. I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, great.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Gordon has already welcomed our two council members in the Committee of the Whole this morning. That was our welcome first item on the agenda as well, so welcome Councilmember Feigl and Councilmember Lawless. Next item on our agenda was less welcome, and it had to do with the expanding problems at our airport, which the council addressed this morning in the Committee of the Whole. And for context, and quickly, just as context for the reading of the resolution that we discussed this morning, I'd like to say that this was a, has, it has been and continues to be a tough issue for all of us, for the members of the council, certainly for the mayor and the administration, for the city. The council, however, has, and it should be acknowledged, the council, a little more than three weeks ago, after the first news of these issues surfaced in the press, the council took a leadership role and, running against the grain in many respects, against the objections of the board, the airport board, and the board chairman, to ask for an independent audit at the airport, to examine these issues that have since proved to be significant and substantial. In today's meeting, it was almost to a person expressed that these issues are not about individuals, they're about the institution. And the remedies that we are encouraging, the actions that we are encouraging as a council have to do with restoring trust and confidence and the unshakable credibility and integrity of the airport. So with that in mind, I'd like to read the resolution and, and make a motion to the effect of adopting this resolution. Whereas the Lexington Bluegrass Airport is a publicly owned facility responsible and accountable to the public, and whereas the governing board of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Airport is appointed by the mayor and subject to confirmation by the Urban County Council, and whereas the council has a clear responsibility to act in the public interest regarding the management and oversight of the airport, and whereas, whereas recent reports have seriously jeopardized public confidence and credibility in the airport's management and oversight, now therefore be it resolved by the council of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government. Section 1, that the Lexington Fayette Urban County Airport Board Chairman is requested to resign his chair and suspend any activities with the Lexington Fayette Urban County Airport Board and airport management until the Kentucky State Auditor completes the independent audit. Section 2, that the Lexington Fayette Urban County Airport Board is urged to suspend approval of all non- approval of all nonessential out-of-state travel by airport staff and board members until the audit is complete. Section 3, that no new appointments be made by the mayor to the Lexington Fayette Urban County Airport Board until the Kentucky State Auditor completes the audit. Section 4, that this resolution shall become effective on the date of its passage. And I will move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
I think the motion would be to amend the docket to add that to the Thursday night docket. So the motion would be to amend the docket to add this resolution to the docket for Thursday evening. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Councilmember McCord.
Mayor, we have a couple of more things, if I can mention, from the Committee of the Whole meeting this morning. We discussed new committee assignments, as well as the merger of stormwater oversight and sanitary sewer oversight committees into the Water Resources Oversight Committee. Now, do we need a motion to adopt that? If, then I will so move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
We had several other new business items, but I believe we're all clear on that, and it's not really necessary, is it? Do you all think to? Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember McCord.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I also want to extend my welcome to Councilmembers Feigl and Lawless. Good to have you all here. A couple of things. One, I want to announce that on January 13th, from 6:00 to 7:00 at the Northside YMCA is the Legacy Trails Public Meeting. Unfortunately, council members that want to be there will be here during its own change. But do encourage all of the members of the community to come out, is this is one of those projects that has huge community support, has already had huge community buy-in and input, and we certainly would like everyone to know what is happening, but also to lend their suggestions. Secondly, I just wanted to ask, Mayor, if it was okay with you, if you wouldn't mind speaking just a little bit to what President-elect Obama's Main Street stimulus package, for lack of a better way of saying it, is, what we are doing in preparation for that, as it relates to my next item.
Sure. I'll be glad to address that. It is a bit of a work in process, but I can give you a quick rundown. The President-elect has made it clear that he's interested in trying to stimulate the economy as quickly as possible. And to that end, he has requested that we identify projects that can be started in 90 days and completed by the end of 2010. They are looking for projects that fall within the broad definition of infrastructure, whether it's transportation projects, water, sewer, government buildings, education, and an assortment of other broadly defined infrastructure projects. They're also looking to try to do some things that would target healthcare technology, which I think bodes well for our community, and for education. There is some discussion about extending benefits for unemployed individuals through the unemployment insurance program nationally. And there's also some tax relief that is contemplated. The U.S. Conference of Mayors has requested on several occasions during December that we provide them with a list of projects that meet the criteria established by the President-elect and his transition team. And we have thus far submitted projects, 124 projects in Lexington that would amount to approximately $454 million worth of investment. And if things go as anticipated, they would generate somewhere in the neighborhood of 6,500 jobs during calendar years 2009 and 2010. That whole exercise is continuing. As a matter of fact, earlier today, we learned that we have until January 9th to submit additions or changes in the list of projects that we have submitted. So if any of you have items that you'd like to add to the list for inclusion that meet those particular qualifications, please let Ned Sheehy know, who has been coordinating that effort. But that's a bit of an overview. It appears as though the timing of this is probably sometime in February, late January, at the earliest February, more likely. And it has great promise for our community if things go as they appear to be going right now.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I think that people see bits and pieces oftentimes, and they don't quite understand how all this fits together. But obviously, this is a tremendous opportunity, depending on which way the Congress goes and how this shakes itself out. But we certainly need to do everything we can to be ready to receive money or to be in a position to take what is offered. And to that end, one of the things that I'd mentioned back before we went on break, that I wanted to push forward at the very beginning of this year, is this practice known as QBS, or quality-based selection, with regard to our engineering selections, how we pick engineers, and especially with regard to so many of these projects that are involved in the stimulus package. If those projects are cleared and paid for through the federal government, then we have a lot of opportunity for getting at some of the other projects that have been backlog. But one of the things I want to do, especially with new council members and other council members that may not be familiar with this, is to organize a council workshop before either a work session or before a council meeting, and bring in George Bender, who's with the American Council of Engineering Consultants and Companies, and ask him to work with our council administrator to set that up for us, so that we can be aware of what that means and how we move forward. But one of the key, key things that this council sees all the time, and I know Councilmember Myers, it has been something we've talked about so often, is change orders, and just how helpless we kind of feel when we see a massive change order. And I know that Commissioner Co and others have seen this as a real problem. And so one of the things about QBS that's really important is, not only does it foster greater competition, because there are engineering companies that will not bid on jobs in Lexington because we're not a QBS city, but also it is a direct way that we can get at change orders. And so that's a really, really important point. But the reason I asked the mayor to speak directly about President-elect Obama's plan is that a lot of these federal dollars can go to only cities that use QBS. And so we want to make sure that we are in line for those things. So that's why I want to move with haste to get the council aware, to answer whatever questions the administration has. And so I plan on doing that in the next couple of weeks. So please, as our council administrator sends you an invitation to that, I would ask that everybody be there. So thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to underline Councilmember McCord's announcement of and appealed to the public to attend the feasibility study review of the Legacy Trail. That's going to be at 6:00 PM once again Tuesday, January 13th, at the North Lexington Y on Loudon, near the Health Department, near Newtown Pike. It's especially important that residents of Northwest Lexington and North Lexington attend this session and give their ideas on the trail. There are going to be many access points for neighborhoods extending all the way from the Horse Park to the proposed Isaac Murphy Memorial Art Garden at the corner of Midland and Third. So this is another opportunity for the public to see the trail design as it now stands, look at the routing, look at their neighborhood's relationship to that trail, and to give their ideas on access, on artistic points of interest along the way, and so forth. So as Councilmember McCord said, most of us will be in this room that night instead of at that meeting. But this is really for the public to provide its input, its advice, and get some information. So I again encourage a lot of folks to attend that night. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Beard.
Thank you, Mayor. As relates to this stimulus package that the President-elect has offered us or is going to offer us, that takes very good care of the construction industry and engineering and such. What about other segments of the economy? Let's say, as we saw in the paper this morning, the automobile industry in a local mode, we're going to see dealerships closed. Well, mechanics may be used in the construction industry. I'm not real sure that a 20-year salesperson is going to be much help. Is there any discussion at all about something that's broader, that can cover more of the population that's in trouble?
With regard to the auto industry specifically, you may recall that the House approved a relief package for the auto industry. The Senate rejected it, and then President Bush indicated that there would be some relief for the auto industry under the TARP program that was adopted back in September and October. So with regard to the auto industry specifically, that's, I think, the primary source of relief for the auto industry. President-elect Obama has indicated that there will be a broad-based tax reduction element in his stimulus package. The exact amount and form of that remains to be negotiated out with Congress as they go through the legislative process, but I do think it's safe to anticipate that there will be some significant tax relief that will probably start showing up in people's paychecks pretty quickly. There are some other elements to the stimulus package. I didn't bring a detailed description with me today, but I think it's safe to say that they are trying to construct it in such a fashion that it would have the maximum impact in as many places as possible, as quickly as possible. The current amount proposed by President-elect Obama is, as I understand, it's $775 billion. And there appears to be strong bipartisan support for that in Congress. But obviously, there's going to be a lot of negotiating going on over the course of the next month or six weeks. So that's about everything I know about it right at the moment. And to the degree any of you have interest in that and care to share your views, I would encourage you to contact Senator McConnell, Senator Bunning, and Congressman Chandler.
Just one other comment. You do have to have a job before tax relief really helps you.
True.
Yeah.
True.
Thank you.
As I mentioned a moment ago, there is some intention to extend unemployment insurance benefits for a protracted period of time. So for those who may not have the job and benefit from the tax relief, perhaps there would be an alternative form of benefit.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Ellinger.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to welcome our new council members to the new term and welcome everybody back. And I was looking through an email that had the list of our retirees, and we've lost a lot of important, valuable institutional knowledge people in this last fiscal year. And one in particular that I'm not sure if y'all are aware of, but Charlie Bolin retired here recently. I just wanted to wish Charlie all the best. He actually did the retirement for our two council members and did a song and dance for them, and it was very entertaining. And I wish we could have done something special for him, because he did a lot for this city, and I wish him the best in all his future endeavors. But I wish everybody who's retired all the best, because I think it's over 100 now. And when we budget that, I'm not sure where we stand. Kenan, do you know how we stand on our retirees and what pays? Because I think we had, what, 170 that we had planned on that? And I think we're up to, according to that list, was 112? Okay. So I just wanted to let everybody be aware of at least one of them in particular, because we did not really do anything special for him. And I think that's somebody who's been here many years that should get some public notarized because he did so much for this community.
Charlie will be back with us next week to make a presentation on 2040, so you'll have an opportunity to visit with him then. And I think there may be something in the works for Charlie. Anything further? All right. We'll move to the mayor's. Okay. Councilmember Myers.
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to echo the comments from Councilmember McCord on the stimulus package and the quality-based contracting, and that the UK does a lot of that, and it's something that we need to look into and look forward to having that presentation. Also, in light of President-elect Obama's pending stimulus package, Mayor, I'd like to ask, if it's possible, I've gotten some feedback from some of the outside agencies that are concerned that the application process for them is, I think, January 15th, the deadline. And they're concerned that there's some opportunities that might be missed if they have to submit their application prior to the President-elect's stimulus package being announced. So they would like to know if we could move that deadline back to maybe the end of February, if that would create too much problem on your budget cycle.
Their application process for the budget purposes or for?
Yes.
Okay.
They have an application they have to submit. I think the deadline's the 15th of January. They're wondering if they could push that back to the end of February, or at least until whatever time the stimulus package is announced, and they can look at what opportunities may be out there for them.
I'll let Commissioner Co address that, because she's more intimately familiar with the process for getting the applications in.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear all your comments. I was working on something else. But the applications are due January 15th, and I wasn't clear what you were asking after that. I'm sorry.
I've had contact with some of the folks from the outside agencies that are going to be submitting applications. They're wondering if there's some opportunity available to them in that stimulus package that might be coming down from President-elect Obama. But if we have to have the deadline at the 15th of January, they'll have to submit their applications prior to whatever announcements he's going to make. They're wondering if we could push that deadline back to the end of February, or at least the middle of February, so that they'd have an opportunity to take advantage of some of those things that are going to be available.
We can take a look at that, but I thought all of President-elect Obama's package was around what we would consider capital projects. And I don't know that we have any outside agencies that, other than maybe the YMCA, that we've really participated in a capital way.
I'll give you an example, and I'm not sure what they have, what they're working on, but I talked to PG Peoples. And the National Urban League has been meeting with the President-elect's staff at some opportunities that might be available to urban leagues around the country.
What about if we do this? If we go ahead and make them do on January 15th, but advise them if they get information after that date that changes what they might have submitted to us, that they be allowed to update it?
Okay.
Because we really need to have those in the system as we move forward, starting to try to make decisions. But we'd be happy to accept any amendments that they might offer. And we'll get something out to the folks that we sent the applications to, to make sure that they understand that they will be allowed to amend if they get something from the package that changes what they sent to us.
Okay.
Is that okay?
That's perfect.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you. I have one more thing. As you know, the fiscal year '09 mayor's budget, mayor's proposed budget included a recommendation to transfer the operation of Day Treatment Center to the Fayette County Public Schools. The members of the link committee studied the proposal at length. Our recommendation was to maintain the center within LFCCG with some minor adjustments. The council's unanimous support for that recommendation demonstrates the importance of this center to our community. After some feedback from the members of the community, including Family Court, I remain convinced that the part of this program's strength is its unique partnership and that LFCCG needs to continue responsibility for its operation. I also believe that the opportunities remain to find efficiencies that will improve its solvency and soften, if not eliminate, its impact on the general fund budget. A small task force comprised of people from the community could help shed light on these opportunities and develop a plan prior to the presentation of FY '09 budget. Such a group could examine the entire project or program in a way that the council link and the administration could not due to its limits in time and resources. I'm requesting that the vice mayor appoint a task force as soon as practical and to take a look at that. And I also have a list of names that I'd like to submit to you. I don't want to do on record until you have a chance to contact them. But my motion is that you would. is that you would, or my request is that you would appoint a task force. Make a motion? Okay. I'll go ahead and make a motion that you put together a task force, and I'll supply you some names as recommendations to study the Day Treatment Center and its feasibility in keeping that where it's at. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by councilmember Myers and a second by councilmember Beard to request the vice mayor to appoint a task force to study the Day Treatment Centers. Is there any discussion? Those in favor, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. That concludes my report.
Is there anyone else? Yes. His report. Councilmember Henson, do you have a report? Okay. Anyone else? All right. That takes us down to the mayor's report. It has been distributed in the packet in light of your action earlier today. I understand there may be some issue with the airport board, but I'm going to keep it on the list, and if you all wish to remove it, that's your prerogative. I think there are some issues under the statutes as to exactly what the council's role is here, but we'll deal with that in due time. For the moment, I'd appreciate a motion to entertain so much of the mayor's report as you wish. To approve it, brother.
I'm moved that we... Would be the appropriate thing here.
Councilmember Gordon.
Well, in light of the fact that the council passed the motion not to appoint any new airport board members, it seems that the second item, the airport board, would not... If we approve that, we go against what we just passed. So it seems to me that we need to table the airport board. I move to table the airport board appointment.
Second.
I have a motion and second to table the airport, the appointment of David Stevens to the airport board. Any... Well, there's no discussion on that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those no, motion carries.
I move to remaining elements of the mayor's report to be adopted.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Gray and a second by councilmember McCord to approve the remaining elements of the mayor's report. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. The only other thing I would add is, as I mentioned on Sunday, I think we saw remarkable results from getting together in a retreat format down at Shakertown a couple of years ago, and I'd like to suggest we do that again, the sooner the better, ideally before the end of the month, in order that we can establish an agenda for the next couple of years. And I'll work with Vice Mayor to try to find a date that will work for most people's calendars as expediently as we can. That is all I have. That takes us down to the public comment on issues not on the agenda. Does anyone wish to address the council? All right. We do have a closed session. Do we have a motion, councilmember Gordon?
Yes, Mayor. I move that the council enter into closed session pursuant to KRS 61.8101C to discuss pending and proposed litigation, the public discussion of which would jeopardize the government's tactics, evidence, and legal position. So moved.
I have a motion by councilmember Gordon to go into closed session, and with a second by councilmember Beard. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.